Exactly.
I used to think that ten percent chance rate, one in ten chance of getting rate that day. But it means that ten out of a hundred parcels of brown will get.
Yeah.
It's ten out of a hundred that will get rated, is it not? Ten percent chance, especially in thunderstorm.
Yeah.
Right. I I always said that I I make it rain one quarter section of the town.
Yeah.
Got a few hundred, a few hundred of them up there at least, some off direction. Here for a little while, we did almost a hundred here.
Really?
Bill, you're gonna want to visit your.
Yeah, sure.
You ready, Karen? So I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Michael.
Here.
She's absent. Smith.
Here.
Annie.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none. Approve agenda.
I move approval.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. And you said Phyllis isn't here, right?
Right.
So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes. Approve minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just have one. So the first line in the minute says that it's the minutes of six nine nine. Yeah. So so I would just change that to twenty one eight. Got it.
Any other corrections? Are we good? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes. Visitors to be heard.
Morning. Thanks for letting me speak to you this morning. It's good to see the commissioners up and up and at it early, right away, right after the big Fourth of July celebration. My name's Bill Shoroma, and I'm running for the House of Representatives in this district, District Seventeen. I live in Dakota Dunes. I was in District Sixteen, been redistricted, and was encouraged by a number of folks to run for this district, so I did. I'm been married to my first wife for forty seven years, just about. And I've got three grown children, ten grandkids, have a business over in Springfield, South Dakota Manufacturing Company. We have about sixty five employees. I used to own Sherco in Yankton and Truxedo in Yankton, and sold those and started Rushco. But I won't spend a lot of time. The cards have a lot of detail. If you want more information, you can go to my website. The I was disappointed the other day to hear that only thirty percent of Americans are proud of their country. It's just a startling number to me. I don't think that's the percentage of South Dakota. And in terms of those that are proud of being South Dakotans, I think it's probably even higher than 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 thirty percent for sure. One thing I want to leave with you, and and I won't belabor it, but it's it's a presentation I'm gonna, I prepared to, I've been asked by a couple of different people to speak on this. It's called the, there's a, there's an initiative that was passed by President Biden, January twenty seventh of two thousand of twenty twenty one. It was called the Thirty by Thirty Program. What that means is that their goal is to have thirty percent of the oceans and oceans water and land that is much of it privately held to be really controlled and turned into a permanent environmental area. And that means it's going to be all natural, not not crop producing. It's just basically all natural. And their real goal has been stated since that their real goal is fifty percent of all land and water to be controlled by the environmental portion of government by fifty fit twenty fifty. So and some countries, other countries have declared it. It's become an international thing. It's a, it's a lot of data. I'll just leave a copy of this. If you're interested, I'd be glad to come and talk to you about it. County commissioners can go online based on what's in here, and there's a proclamation. It's not illegal. You can't provide a permanent environmental easement in our county. Now, there's new law that's being proposed to limit it to fifty years, but they've been doing it in perpetuity and tied into CRP. It's kind of cleverly hidden in the language or overtly stated and saying, okay, we'll we'll give you a longer period of CRP CRP access and a higher price if you allow us to do this permanent environmental easement. It's kind of like the same, you know, back when they were doing Obamacare, they said, if we, if you like your doctor, you can keep your doctor. If you like your insurance, you can keep your insurance. It's your land. You can do with it what you want. But that's not true. They control what you can do. You can't build a home on it. You can't run cattle on it. You can't plant wildlife strips of food, any of that. It's all just has to be natural. So it's, I'll just leave you this. It's it's just my notes. I went to a presentation by Governor Ricketts. It was a conference that people from all of the United States, twenty three different states there. And I gathered some notes and kind of put it into a presentation. You're welcome to read it. And like I said, I'll be glad to come and talk to you. I'd appreciate your consideration in November. Didn't have a primary. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Bill, do you have any idea how much land is controlled or owned by the federal state?
Over a third of the federal lands, there's over a third of the United States owned by the federal government, controlled by the federal government. There's twenty two percent of private land that is has permanent environmental easements, maybe because they were in a CRP or a monument in the state that the state has set aside acres for and so on, and and waters that have been designated that way. So they say that we're losing a football field of land to development. Every, what does it say, thirty seconds or something like that? But if you do the math, that comes up to eleven million acres. This plan is four hundred million acres to be owned and not owned. It's privately owned property. That's the benefit we have in the United States is we have private land ownership. But it will be controlled through these environmental, permanent environmental easements. So that's the scary thing. They're not targeting just poor land. They're targeting land that's adjacent, oh, like the the hills over on the eastern edge of the state here. They'll target land near those. Now, there's also the the tech billionaires that are giving money to the environmental groups to go out and buy land and convert it to permanent environmental property. And you can't blame the farmers that are selling to those groups because they're paying thirty, forty, fifty percent bonus versus what the land is is regularly worth. So but they're they're definitely dedicated to taking land out of production and and putting it into all natural. So if the government owns thirty percent of all the controls, all thirty percent of all the land right now, and they're doing this for global warming and climate change reasons, then we shouldn't have a problem if a third of the land is already natural. Because it's not, it's not changing the outcome. So anyway, that's a lot more than I thought I'd talk about, but I don't want to take any more of your time. I really appreciate your time. So my name is Bill Shoroma, and I'd appreciate your support if you could find a way to do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Are there any other visitors to be heard? Is Rod?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, Phyllis, did you want? Are you gonna sit there? Do you want to come up? Okay.
Microphone, please.
I said my computer would not connect with Zoom. I even had your office send me a new. And it said.
And what, and what goes around comes around.
Yeah, Lane was waiting for that.
Yeah, I know.
So Rod, purchase of a two thousand nine Ford F five fifty boom truck?
Yes, I did not have it on the budget list for purchases. I've been trying to buy one for three years. I have it on, or I had it on my budget for next year. I had eighty thousand budgeted for, I have the money in my budget. We did not buy the low boy trailer. That was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We can get by with one we have. We had an estimate last year, verbal estimate of about twenty five thousand to do all the trimming in the county, but you have to work when they're available. So we can use this whenever we have a half a day or a rainy day, or we can use it on fixing signs. And I think it's a pretty good buy. It had new motor put in it. It's all been inspected down at Stephens in Sioux City. It's the only used boom truck I found within six hundred miles for two years. I think it's a good buy and just wanted your thoughts, I guess.
So you're already budgeted for this year for a hundred and twenty thousand for a drop deck? Is that right?
Right, for two thousand twenty two, yes.
Okay, so you have, oh, go ahead.
No, I, yeah, I have the money in the budget. I just, it wasn't on the list, and I didn't want you to think I was trying to sneak something in, so.
So you'd use this, this truck mainly for sign maintenance and replacement and what tree trimming and that sort of stuff over roadways or?
Right, right. Over the roadways is what we have trouble, you know, we we do have a a loader with a forks and a basket on it, but it's not the safest thing. And you can't reach out over, you know, basically gotta be in the ditch, and you can't get the ones that are hitting the semis and our blades and snow plows when we're plowing snow. But yeah, that's what it'll be used mainly for. Then the guys that are replacing signs that are damaged on the post don't have to crawl up a little crooked ladder we got made or else have to take the whole sign post down to do it. They can just swing out and bolt a couple bolts, put a new sign up.
So I guess you've answered my other question is what do you, what do you do now without it?
Yeah, well, we, we hired, we had a guy hired for this spring kind of, you know, just to do a couple of hard spots. And of course, he got busy in the field and now we're busy getting ready to pave, and it just never works out when we can get one of those guys to come where we don't have a big project. They gotta move down the road as we go. And we're gonna have to pick up the branches anyway, so we just will do it ourselves.
Well, it sounds like you said it, what, costs twenty five thousand dollars to have somebody come and trim them all up?
Yeah, that was, that was two years ago with the diesel, diesel prices, and we got more trees now that are getting dangerous. That we go ahead.
I guess I would go ahead and recommend that we do it.
Sounds like we'd be saving money by purchasing.
Yeah.
Has the truck been thoroughly gone over for?
Yes, they they have to inspect, like the boom has to be inspected, all the hoses, anything to do. The pump, all that has to be inspected every two years and certified. And it was done in the last six months, so we're good for a year and a half.
I've bought stuff from, used equipment from Stephens before, and they're pretty good at making sure it's right when it goes out to work. Bought, and I bought a few things that I took at home and wasn't satisfied with it, took it back, and they made it right with me. So confident that that we have something that would be in decent shape buying from Stephens.
So I have a motion.
Move to approve the purchase.
Second.
I already had a motion from Mike.
Oh, Mike, okay.
So I just need a second.
Get a second.
But I still need a second on Mike's motion. Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes. Anything else, Rod?
Nope, that's all I have.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Drew, Sudlow's addition.
Check on the plat and the owner's, the venerable family or the owner's law for tracks.
Okay.
So we need approval, right?
Yep.
I'll move to approve the plot.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes.
Let me speak myself. Thank you for your service.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thanks. It could be worse. We could be in you, you carry.
Yeah, I know. I know we're good as well.
Yeah, I know.
Ordinance twenty twenty two dash ten, second reading of rezone land. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes.
Keep it up, keep it up, guys.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
I was just gonna tell you to remind me before I leave again.
Yeah, there's some surveyors.
They can wait. Let's see. So we'll have to wait for Scott to show up. Opt out resolution discussion and twenty twenty three budget discussion. And I
I'm gonna start by saying.
Yeah.
How you have those thoughts that wake you up in the middle of the night? I had one of those. Um, I think, and I haven't had a chance to really look at it. I think I accounted for the operating transfers to the highway and the emergency management twice when I prepared the budget. So if I did, the the surplus cash is gonna be a whole lot better than what it looks like. So.
That'd be good, because it looked bad.
It did. It did. And I I think I really do think I accounted for it twice. So I need to go back and look through that today.
So this is a long weekend overnight thing?
Yeah.
So sometime this week, we'll see the traction.
Yes.
So so with that information, I think we can just wait on all of this discussion until the next meeting.
Yeah.
I do have one thing in there. If you go into the treasures, they have, I think it's for professional services. Last year, they had budgeted like two thousand, and this year they're budgeted fifty thousand. And the one right below it is just the opposite.
I, she may have been moving postage from online to the other.
Yeah, you better look at those.
Yeah, I'll take a look. I think she was moving postage from one to the other. Yeah, I'll take a look. So.
Postage is like forty five K?
Yes, but we get reimbursed for that because they then charge the customer.
Yeah.
Which is kind of a wash.
Yeah.
Well, it's actually better than that.
Yeah.
We we charge a buck.
Yeah.
To mail. And I don't know, what's it cost, Carrie? Fifty five, fifty eight?
Yeah, something like that.
Depends on, depends on how many.
They actually make money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Regional jail resolution twenty twenty two dash thirteen. Does anybody have any concerns or they like, like it?
To approve it as written.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes.
Thank you, Betty.
Thanks, yeah, thanks, Betty.
Can we go back to the budget just for that?
Yeah.
Okay, Carrie, the other thing I was wondering about, you know, you said that the opt out is at seven hundred fifty thousand.
Seven twenty five.
Or seven twenty five, excuse me. Where is that reflected?
In the tax, the property taxes collected.
Okay, so that's where, that's what I thought, but I wasn't positive. But I did, you know, I was looking for it to be.
Separate?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I figured that's where it was at, but I wanted to make sure that.
Yeah.
I just text Scott, so hopefully he's, because it's Scott and the executive session are the only two things we have left. And just a reminder, meeting tonight at five, correct, Carrie?
Yeah.
I do have a report from the Joint Solid Waste. If wasn't here to get, sorry. Anyways, we met a couple of weeks ago, and it was voted to raise the rates at the landfill. Two dollars and fifty cents per ton for Vermillion and four dollars and fifty cents for Yankton, which actually takes us to a ten dollar difference between what Yankton pays for solid waste to what Vermillion pays, which is what was recommended six, seven years ago by our consultant on the difference between running the transfer station and transporting. And that was seven years ago. So we finally got it to the ten dollar split. Being as things are, this will be looked at during the year as to what fuel prices, et cetera, are doing.
So when you say Vermillion, do you mean all of Clay County then, too?
Yes.
Okay.
And the difference goes to paying for the operation of the transfer station up in Yankton.
The difference in Yankton, well, yeah, the whole pays for, and then they transfer money over as to what it, what for the operation of the landfill.
So what do they do like with all point? I know they all garbage up there.
And actually, it's, yeah, it would be two dollars and fifty cents for all that going to the land, directly to the landfill. An additional two hundred, two fifty.
Cost for what comes from Yankton, but if you don't, it's F O B, the landfill.
Part of the intention of getting the ten dollar split was trying to get more trucks in Yankton to actually direct deliver, especially construction debris, et cetera. That wasn't particularly happening, so.
So for Clay County, what does that, that extra two dollars and fifty cents a ton, what does that get us to now? Do you know?
What are we, we're I was saying it was thirty seven fifty or thirty eight, so it'd be on top of the thirty, the what it is currently.
Anything else, Phyllis?
No.
Go ahead, Lane.
Oh, um, Ben, I, sorry, Scott just got there. So but anyway, just wanted to remind the commission that on the nineteenth, we got our current and past county employee barbecue and from the safety board, want to just make sure you all feel free to come and have hot dogs. And if you happen to see Leo or something like that, just tell him to come too. So it's a good time to sit and just talk with the county employees. So, all right, thanks.
Thanks, Lane.
Say, Lane, are you gonna try to do it outside again like they did last year?
Yes, um, well, if unless we get rain, it's going to be hot and sunny and the grass is crispy and all of that. But yeah, we'll try to be outside. We'll have the quarter pound hot dogs, beans, chips, all of that again. So.
Thank you. Scott?
That was the nineteenth, wasn't it?
Yeah, two weeks from today.
Yeah.
So we've got the HVAC project now, if you're ready, Scott. Ryan's on. Is your microphone on?
Yeah, it looks like we're ready to go. I see Ryan there, Lynn and Mike. And I think that's it. I let Ryan pick it off, I guess.
Yeah, whoever wants to start, go ahead.
This is Ryan. I guess I'm not prepared with what the intention of the discussion was today. I'm certainly willing to jump in and talk about it, but not really sure what what we were all going to talk about today.
I think we're looking for an update about where we're at in the process and what's going on with the J J L G, how they fit into the whole process and kind of where we're at.
Yeah.
Too. Yep, I can take that too, Ryan. Start us off and then turn it over to you if there's any specific questions. So I guess as far as, my name's Lynn Remmers from J L G Architects. We also have Mike Shaline on the line from J L G as well. I will be acting project manager for the project. The reason we, Ryan asked us to kind of be part of the initial discussion is J L G will hold the initial contract for the work. We are sub consulting with Ryan and Associated Consulting Engineering here at a Sioux Falls. Most of the project with these M E P upgrades is going to be is the scope of work will be mostly mechanical, electrical, and plumbing upgrades. But there will be some architectural components. We will be involved in helping create the background drawings, coordination of consultants and basically kind of getting the the specifications drawing pulled together for bidding and construction. So one of the other things we have talked about too, and you'll see that in our proposal, is we also are bringing on banner associates for civil work. The main civil component on this project will be bringing in a new water line for the new addition of the fire sprinkler to the building. The other consultant we are bringing on is a structural engineer. And their primary role will be ensuring structural capacity for any HVAC equipment that might need to be you know, changed out or added. So looking at floors or structure, that sort of thing. So bringing them on to make sure they're looking at the the systems and engineering those appropriately. So that's kind of the the bulk of it. Are there any specific questions or anything we can help answer? I don't know if you have the proposal in front of you, but we've kind of listed out the scope of work and kind of our expectations of of what we see moving forward. We did list a brief schedule also, so kind of starting design in September, going through September, October, and then into the the winter for designing, and then bidding the project in in early February into March. So more of a spring start of And then bidding the project in in early February into March, so more of a spring start of construction.
I guess I had a couple of questions on here, kind of minor, I think, but I thought maybe just get them into the process now instead of waiting. Does any of this include the removal of the old boiler stack? On the north side of the building, I think Ryan knows what we're talking about here.
Yeah, Ryan, do you want to answer that one?
Yeah, let's see, that would be. There's a boiler stack connected to the boiler that's in the safety center right now. If we're gonna leave that boiler as a kind of a backup, we'd have to leave that one in place. Uh, but then the chimney for the boiler that's in the courthouse right now, that that could be. I'm sorry, I don't exactly remember what it looks like, but it it wouldn't be used anymore. So if we need to cap it, or if it's if it sticks above the building aways, I suppose we could take that down. And cap it. So that answer your question, Scott?
Uh, yes, Andy's not here and he's our historian. The one that's falling apart, Travis, is that, do you know if that's attached to the to the courthouse boiler? Oh, Andy?
That's the safety center boiler.
That's the safety center, the one that's kind of.
Yep.
Okay.
And it it could be repaired as part of the project as well, if if there's a specific problem with it and we still want to maintain it. And keep that boiler. Then that could be dealt with as part of the project.
It needs to be addressed, it's getting pretty rough looking, I don't know. If it's, you know, maybe it's not as bad as it looks, but. It is. There you go.
Yeah, I was just gonna comment that it it does look pretty bad, I don't know how close to falling it is, but the the steel wrap that's on it's what's deteriorated. Actually, some of it's fallen off over the years and exposing, I think it's cement, the actual chimney, but it's got a got a steel wrap on it that's. Rusting off, a little TLC might extend its life. I just didn't want it to fall over without us ever having considered that there might be a problem there. Uh, maybe, maybe it can stand for a couple more decades if it was taken care of, I I just want to make sure we've talked about it.
Just so I'm clear again, this boiler project isn't doing anything with the safety center?
Though, if I'm not mistaken, the boilers are going to be put into the courthouse, will have the capacity to. Pick up the safety center. And then if I'm not mistaken, and Ryan can probably speak this, it'll be large enough to get us going into the future for any remodels over there and that sort of thing. Is that correct, Ryan?
Yeah, yeah, that's the intent, the the thought is if we're gonna, we want to put two boilers in the the courthouse for redundancy. And the thought is just to get a size or two larger and then it can carry the other building. Now, keep in mind, this is not all designed yet, it's just a matter of what size is needed, so. You know, for some reason, we are not going to do that, we can change that. But yes, that that was the intent, then you have two brand new high efficiency boilers that would serve both buildings. There'd be just a couple of pipes that connect between the two buildings to to backfeed to the safety center.
Right, and so keep the old one there and functioning, just just in case scenario.
Yeah, it would be a basically a third backup, because you already have two boilers and then also. That that one that's there in the safety center, I believe it can run on fuel oil, if for some reason you wanted that as a form of redundancy, in case there was a. Issue with getting natural gas.
Right, yeah. But on in the courthouse here, the two boilers. Is the system designed? To run off one boiler or? Is it a two boiler design, I mean, does the first boiler come on and if it can't carry a load, the second boiler comes on, is that the design and the intent?
Yeah, typically what we do is we, when we have two boilers, is we size them at roughly seventy five percent of the load. The calculated load and we know that. We're pretty conservative when we figure calculated load, so in reality, you might be able to heat everything with just one boiler. You know, maybe you have to turn a few temperatures down a little bit, if one of the boilers failed and you only have one boiler, but. Uh, as Scott said, yeah, if one can't keep up, the other one comes on, they run together. But we would anticipate seeing just one boiler running most of the time.
So wouldn't we be better off to hook the safety center in right now and get rid of that old boiler? It's over thirty years old now, so.
Yeah, and and the idea is that we will connect it in, uh, it's just. It's still kind of up in the air if we if we want to keep that boiler or just get rid of it. And we can dig into that a little bit more, I I actually haven't even looked at the boiler other than a picture, because we we only studied the courthouse, not the. Safety center, so as we get into design more, we can evaluate that more.
What does everybody else think about that, I mean?
So the only thing we're using it for now is the backup, right, that in the future, that's what we'll be using for.
Well, right, but it's gonna, it's, how inefficient is it?
It it can't be any more than an eighty percent efficient, that would be the maximum.
And that's if it was new.
Yeah, yeah, good.
But now that it's over thirty years old, how much efficiency has it lost?
Uh, right.
And how much money are you gonna stick into the stack?
Well, cuz.
Yeah, tho- those are the kind of things that we would evaluate, if if it's gonna cost fifty grand to to fix the stack and make other repairs, then it it doesn't make any sense. You would just. Just remove it. Um, but but yeah, like I said, I I have not looked at the boiler myself and we can evaluate that. But I I get, I I think the direction you're pointing me towards is don't spend a lot of money on it, is that? Is that what you're saying? Yeah.
Yeah, cuz we're better, we're better off to spend that money to upgrade than.
Yes, yeah.
Repair old.
And learn full attention intention of using that building. So it should be.
Yeah, no matter what happens.
Right. We need the facilities to function for us.
And if the book two boiler design is for a hundred and fifty percent of the total load, including the safety center. It's just to not look back and and not depend on that old boiler or spend really any money on it at all.
Right.
Well, even if even if we do get a new jail. Andy had said, I'm not trying to put words in his mouth, but he said he's gonna still need some sales there to bring prisoners over for courses and stuff, so I mean, it's still gonna be used. Even if it is used for something else, it'll be used for the jail, you know, so I mean. Yeah, no, he's throwing more good money after bad again, he's already done that someplace.
I would agree. I'll go ahead.
On your J L G compensation, I see that architectural, that's forty one thousand dollars, and that's. That's overall supervision of the entire project is what I assume that is from. Other projects I've been on.
Correct, yep, there will be possibly some architectural components. Adding in the sprinklers and that sort of thing, if there's ceilings that are affected, any penetrations through walls or. Anything like that, that may have to be repaired, so there'll be a few minor things, architecturally in terms of drawings or details that we'd provide. Um, but yeah, the bulk of our our scope will be in attending meetings, site verification of the and. Basically building the the architectural model of the the building. So we'll get a couple of site visits up there to to do some of that field verification, that way Ryan and his team have a good set of drawings and background. Information to to do their work.
And that that's where the bulk of the money goes, at ninety four thousand dollars essentially structural, is that mainly to assess the. Any structural weakening that might be to the walls because of the penetrations, or are we thinking of? Equipment that's up on the roof that may need, that could be heavier than what's there now, or what are the, what are the?
Correct, yeah, the. The bulk of it will be, you know, anything added, so if if we're changing out a unit and kind of, we can look at the size of what's there, comparing it to. The new sprinkler mains typically will have a load associated with them. So we need to factor that in, they're being hung from the floor system or the roof structure. So yeah, so those are kind of the the pieces that are that are structural engineers gonna be looking at.
On page four, item nine, could you clarify what's meant there?
Um, I'm not seeing item nine. Which document are you referring to?
This is the M A P design responsibilities. Oh, wait a minute, that's a. Structural engineering associates.
Okay, I see where you're at.
Oh, the special inspections.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
Yep, so that's during during construction, any special inspections for testing? Um, if we were to put in a new beam or new concrete, that concrete or steel testing during constructions is special inspections. And that's usually a separate contract during construction, and that won't be known until we get into what's actually designed and what's actually put in. And then those inspections, it's advantageous for that to be owner provided. Because then the special inspections and testing is is supplied directly to you, so it's not related to the contractor, not related to the designer. But that piece is usually built into the contractor's price for owner's responsibility. If that kind of makes sense.
And the the other thing I had, and this is pretty minor too, that equipment yard out here, that we're probably gonna be pulling the chiller out. And putting in this and that, but can we can we factor in there a new fence for that yard, so the one that's there is pretty. Iffy. Is that a possible, I mean, it's kind of being expensive, but.
I think it's definitely something we can look at. That problem.
So you said we are gonna put a new chiller in?
I I don't know, I'm just brainstorming.
As of now, we're planning.
You gotta get in that yard.
Chiller.
Yeah, we're using the same chiller, but we're gonna have to get in that yard for this.
Oh, okay, okay, that's what I was wondering, cuz I was like, that chiller's.
Sorry.
Not even ten years old.
But.
Eight years probably.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you know, if we can get that as part of the project, it's getting pretty shoddy, it might be time to do it. Might be convenient just to tear it down while we're in there working, be handy or getting stuff in and out of there anyway, I would imagine.
Does anybody have any other thoughts, questions?
No, just common sticker shot.
Just stop looking at that. Just look at all the stuff we're gonna get. Yeah, cuz I would assume it's not, our only hope is that it comes down by next February.
Yeah.
Cuz that's that's the intent, right, to bid by next February or so?
Correct, yep.
Correct.
Okay.
But these parts, we would need to encumber pretty much right away, wouldn't we, or?
Because, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, those would be. I mean, we can get you a fee schedule, once we get the kind of our next steps upon approval is working through contract. And getting that in place, and then we can get you a billing schedule that kind of gives you guys an idea of of what that looks like. The duration of the project and monthly billing, so. It's, there's not an upfront cost or anything like that.
Yeah, I I, you know, I didn't total up the the individual pieces for each of your firms or or things, but. You know, it it ends up being.
Yep, yep, the total, yeah, is is listed there, one forty nine, five seventy five.
That's, yeah, that includes all each of them.
Yeah, so our next step then to get going is. They need me to authorize this contract? Is that correct, you need a signature from us?
Correct, we'd like approval of the proposal, signature on the proposal, and then we'd work with, I'm assuming probably Kerry. Um, on on contract and getting something documented in a in a formal contract. Or whoever you guys would like to to have as that representative.
And within our present budgeting constraints, we've got this.
And we're gonna want to have Lexi or Sam look at the contract before we approve it, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they're they're not here today, so hopefully by next Tuesday.
So we we would sign it after running it through legal, but. Should, can, and should we approve it today based on?
Not until they look at it.
Okay.
So what you have in front of you is actually just the proposal, we haven't prepared a contract yet, we. So the the dollar amount would not change, the proposal just lists what the intention, what the intention is. What the fee would be, but we would now, if this is approved and accepted by. By you guys in your board, is we would go back and start prepping that that proposal, and then we would go back and forth with your. Legal associate to make sure that that is approved, and then the next step would be then you would sign that proposal, so. We just want to get the fee proposal in front of you to know that what will be coming in the contract. And and then you'll get the actual, it's an A I A standard form. Contract that we would work out with your legal and go back and forth to ensure that everything's in there and and. That piece gets worked out with legal before you actually sign it, so the the approval of the fee allows us to go into that contract. Negotiation portion.
So then are you looking for a a signature on these proposal forms today then, to get started with that?
Yeah, that would, that would be, that would be ideal, but actually, we don't, we don't need a signature on that proposal. We just, you know, would like to have approval before we go into the contract negotiation, cuz that's a piece of of administrative and overhead. That gets worked out and, you know, we put some hours and some time into that, so just acknowledgement of the of the fee. And the proposal that is moving forward into contract, because once that's in the contract, then then we. You know, it's more work for us to go back and change the dollar amount and. You know, so that's why we get that fee proposal in front of you first.
Okay, and that we can do today, if you've, if you're comfortable.
Yeah.
Proposal?
One second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Pose same sign, motion passes.
And as, and as always, if you have any questions through the contracting process or, you know. Additional questions that may arise when we get, before we start design, if there's any questions, please let Lynn or I know. Uh, or Ryan, and we can make sure that we get those answers to you as quick as possible, but we'll start the contracting process here and then. Work with Kerry to get that into legal.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Thank you all, looking forward to working with you.
Anything else, Scott?
Going forward to this project, is it beneficial to hear from these people every thirty days or just wait for them to contact us? Say, Dave, we need to probably meet, what do you guys think, I mean? I don't know.
We're gonna end up with some back and forth during the contract and working out the contract itself and legal and. My guess is that will be driven mainly by Lexi and and by these guys, especially when we're on on the architectural side.
If I could add some.
If I could add something to that, too. Uh, when we're into design and, you know, making decisions like, do you want to expose ductwork in this office? Or do you want to soft it built around it, things like that? I think we'd be working with, with Scott, uh, directly on things like that. And if there's things that he wants to bring before you, you can, you know, bring that up in a meeting. I, I certainly would not intend that we do any real design decision or design discussions in these meetings. Um, but giving you an update once in a while, um. Of where our status is, would we certainly be good with doing that? Lynn, you have anything to add to that as far as?
That's kind of what I was thinking, uh, update, you know, I don't know if it's every thirty days, forty-five day, I don't know. And I, I, you know, I think we can leave that to Scott's discretion, or anything rises to the level that we should be, uh, raised up, but.
Okay.
Another load.
Okay.
Keep it on.
Haven't collapsed yet.
Yeah, don't run away.
Anything else?
No.
You don't have anything else, Scott, for?
Well, that's the guy who want more sticker shock. Not about this project.
We haven't collapsed yet, so.
Well, I don't know, five thousand dollars just seems to be a number nowadays. That's the price I got to paint that room, that's a four H building. That's the thing, well, it's eighty by forty or eighty by thirty, it's a big room.
That's the.
Four thousand eight hundred dollars, but I, I've reached out to a couple of guys, I haven't heard another guy yet. I fell out of my chair this morning when I read that one. I thought, my gosh. Is, is that the only quote you've got so far? Well, I got one more guy, Tucker Clint said he, he just couldn't promise it by the twenty ninth. And they really wanted done by the twenty ninth for achievement days, of course.
Yeah.
So, you know, hindsight's twenty twenty, we should have left that old unit in there. Kind of covering that ugly spot in the wall.
I can't believe we can't cover that spot with something for.
Well, I know, we can get something close to match it, but we'll paint, you know, it's not gonna be dead on. But people aren't going there, look at the room anywhere, they're going to look at. The kids' achievements, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, put those posters up over that.
I just said we could hang a tarp over it.
Yeah.
Hang something on it or whatever.
Can't you buy a spray gun and do it?
About some of your artwork. You gotta, you gotta big piece.
Yeah.
We may need it.
Got a few.
I mean, the room, it's like, kind of like, well, a lot of things are, it, it needs to be painted, obviously, but. Nice kind of ability to shop around a little bit more, not feel like you're against the wall here, but, you know, we can.
We just throw a bunch of plastic down.
Material to, to fix it, to kind of fix up the wall right there, I could go and get it on the wall, but, I mean, we should still get. Good four H button.
Well, that's what I was just gonna say.
Too, I mean, back when I was growing up, you know, four H kids had a project, where's the Boy Scouts at nowadays? I shouldn't break in on my soapbox here.
Yeah, I mean, you should do stuff all over town.
When I was involved with Habitat for Humanity, we used to do painting projects and raise money to, uh, do, do our housing projects.
Tangier days. That's ways off.
Yeah, there, there is a Boy Scout troop in town that helped, uh, with a park cleanup.
Really?
Yeah, they were, they were. Yeah, they, they worked incredibly hard over a weekend, so, um, I, you know, I think there are groups out there, um.
Just, uh, I know sometimes there's groups with the university too, because we used, we used to come to says that, we get emails, hey, can we help you with this? Can we help with that? You know, get a project for us.
Yeah, during, during the school year, there, there's actually requirements, um, uh, for graduation. That everybody has to put in a certain number of, um, volunteer hours.
Right.
So, um, I, but, uh, you know, obviously over the summer, that would be really difficult. That would be something that they would do, you know, during, during the semester. But I, I, I think it's, yeah, I mean, they're, they're definitely a resource, plus the football team, and there are a few of the teams that do it.
There are two, um, individuals, two missionaries with the Mormon church here in town. They're always advertising out there on Facebook that they'll, you know, do things for free for people, so maybe.
Well, at any rate, I, I don't think we ought to get stampeded, taking the, at this point, I think we. Like I said, I know we got the whole house done for thirteen hundred, those days are long over.
United Way also has a list of, you can go in and say, we need volunteer help for this. We've been on a list for the Arts Council for two years and never gotten any, but it's there, maybe it worked better for something like that.
Okay, I, you know, that's, that is a pretty big room, I don't know, that might be kind of a little rolling project for some civic group, but.
Well, I'm gonna ask the four H leaders. You know, all those kids in those groups. I mean, there's four hundred kids in four H. If we got ten percent of them, it wouldn't take very long to paint that room. We can buy brushes and rollers for, and the paint for a lot cheaper than five thousand dollars.
Better have really good drop cloth.
Well, yes. But I think, you know, since it's, it's their building that's being used, it'd be a good project for them, but.
I think so, I think that's, there's good linkage there. If you get decent paint, it doesn't drip as there as much as you.
No.
That's, that's, that's part of the whole thing, you go buy some cheap paint somewhere, yeah, it's gonna run all over the place, but, you know. You know, you get older kids, they're gonna be, they're gonna, I don't think you have to worry about that. I mean, I drop, I still paint. I use a drop box, so I mean, drop cord. That's why, that's why you have good, good, well-placed drop box.
Yep.
We'll redo the floor again, then.
Yeah. We'll just, just tape the good plastic down.
There you go. Sounds like a plan to me, I, I had that roof inspected too, over there, and I haven't heard back from that gentleman, I have to give him a call and see where we're at. He, he looked, there's actually, you guys probably know the history, there's already, there's three buildings there. So it's kind of pieced together and you can definitely see it coming up on the roof. And he's, he, he pointed out a lot of areas that were getting pretty iffy, just starting to pull away from the perimeter wall the membrane is and stuff. And he, he, he said, you know, on this day and age, what's the cost of everything? You might be better off repairing it. Kind of seeing where, where that price goes, but, so what I haven't heard back from them yet, but I'll get, I'll reach out to them and try to get a report coming in. So we know what we're looking at over there.
When you look at the extension budget request, I think Lauren included some money in there. I think her thought was replacing the roof, but like you said, the prices, I don't know that it's enough.
Yeah.
Um. But just when you look at budgets, that's, she threw some money in there for that, so if you find mine.
Oh, so I'll try to deal with that guy and try to get that coming, so we got an idea.
So, speaking of budget, when it comes to that, and I know this is new for everybody, because, you know, we just hired Scott. But should all maintenance be under Scott's budget?
We've been talking about it, and I think Andy preferred to keep some of their things separate. Lauren really, you know, didn't care either way, um, I don't know, Scott, it didn't matter. I don't think it mattered for Scott much.
I kind of got, yeah. I've been tossing this around my mind, I don't know really which way to go. I mean, it's, it's the way it is now, you, you can definitely, uh, track that money better, I guess, you know? I don't know how important that is, I mean, because the, uh. Work order program that we've chosen that I'm using, you know, it. It goes right back to that, that building, that particular area, this and that, so you, you always have that to fall back on, but. It's kind of hard, yeah, because I don't know what the four H budget's at, what the four H budget is. And I go to Andy, Andy and ask how much money he has left before I do anything over there. So, you know, but, uh, so just kind of pros and cons both ways. And, you know, I think it's handy for Andy and Lauren, probably, so they have an idea too, so I don't know, it's, it's, you know. For me to be able to see it would be nice, I guess, even if it's just I'm getting the budget sheet over the computer. So I can see what the dollar amount is fixed to those buildings. And going forward here, maybe, you know, I can have a better input as to what. You know, that budget should look like, like with this roof over there. And it's not like it's leaking or anything, and there might be some leaking around some of those columns, it's really hard to tell. Because the ceiling tiles never been taken out and stained, so we don't really know where we're at over there yet, but.
You know, it, it makes some sense to be to centralize, um, and I, you know, I think the reason is that, um, you know, you're the person. Who's gonna have to do the, um, ultimately the estimating.
Right.
Um, and, um, you know, you're the person who's gonna have to hire people to do that. And you're the person who's gonna supervise and sign off on the work. And if you don't have control of the budget, basically what we're doing is we're creating a situation where the person with the authority. And, um, uh, you know, the bud, and the money, uh, is different from the person who actually has to do the work. So it might make some sense to sort of simplify it by, you know, having it centralized. And, and you can, uh, you know, you can allocate within your budget, this goes, yeah, break it down within your budget. But, um, you know, I, I, I think I, I would rather have you sign off. Um, um, you know, and, and, and I'd rather have you involved in bid specifications and so on. You know, rather than department heads whose main job is really to, I mean, it's a distraction for department heads.
Sure.
Yeah.
At this point in the budget process, it's really easy for me to move that money over. I just have to know from Lauren and Andy, dollar amounts that they had allocated for those maintenance things. To move them over to the courthouse. Um, because I mean, there are within each department, some repair and maintenance sort of things that go with their own equipment or their own stuff. That don't have to do with the building, so I would just have to have dollar amounts to move them over, and that's not a problem.
Because it's definitely gonna be easier for, for us, the five of us to. Add budget time to go, okay, this is what we've got for facilities repair and maintenance, because it's all under Scott's then. Instead of trying to hunt through the budget, especially if somebody asks us, how much are you spending on repairs and maintenance? Well, they're not, they're not worried about computer maintenance. They're wondering, they're worried about the buildings, so it'd just be simpler. Plus, I mean, the department heads are gonna send the request to Scott anyway, for what they want fixed. And hopefully, I mean, obviously, since they're budgeting six months before the budget's in place, they're already thinking about what they want to fix for next year. So they can just run that by Scott and say, put this in there, we, we need this fixed. And then he gets the job of prioritizing.
Right.
What's gonna get done and what's not.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, I was just, I talked to Andy often on, you know, quite often, so. You know, him and I talked about repairs over there, and I needed to get that report going with Lauren over at the four H building. So I kind of know what they're seeing, and, and like you say, you know, get it prioritized and get their input, but have it all in one, but like. Has been suggested, you know, we can, it's a lump sum, but you can break it down on paper, so, you know, what's what.
Because I guess I'd look at it how, the way you're gonna do it is kind of how Rod does it. It's got a dollar amount for, just say the low boy that he didn't buy, but that's what I'm gonna spend on it. And this one I'm gonna spend on the payloader, where yours is gonna be, safety center's gonna, we're gonna spend this much fixing it. And the four H building's gonna be this much.
Right.
And they're all guestimates, and then emergencies happen, and nobody gets anything fixed. And we have something else, major project that has to take all the budget money.
Yeah, that's true. Okay. All right, we can, I can do that.
This is Andy, one thing to keep in mind, and this is completely okay, but, um. The Vermont Police Department does share in cost and maintenance of this building. So, right now, the chief and I split bills according to the joint powers agreement. Where it's, sometimes it's a, a two-thirds, one-third split, sometimes it's a fifty-fifty split. And if my repairs are under Scott's budget, that's fine, it's just Scott's gonna have to keep that in mind. And, and make sure that those bills that need to be split go to the PD with the, they need to pay. Because they need to continue to budget for their share.
Yep.
So, so. That, if I did a repair over there, um, I would send that bill on to you then, Andy, for that final step with the PD.
You know, I could give you some advice on it, but if it's your budget, it's not my, not my bill to sign off on. But I could certainly, uh, work with you on it for sure. I mean, I'm, I'm sure I'd be working with you even before, before you did the work, I'm sure. We, we discussed doing something like we did for the custodial and, uh, janitorial supplies, paper towels, toilet paper, things like that. Where the city pays, um, you know, essentially this year, a guesstimate of what, what it actually costs. And they, they pay the county back for that. But I think that repairs, having the city contract for repair work, uh, beyond Scott's time, is probably a real shot in the dark. Uh, to have them anticipate that next year and put it in there, and then all expenses are paid, the county, county fixes the roof. Even if it costs twenty thousand more than what, what the contract was. So that's definitely a, an, uh, a way we could go, but the way we've been doing it seems to work pretty well. And, uh, splitting with the city, and, uh, and this would, would work. It's just that Scott's got to keep in mind that on a, on a repair job in, um, safety center, that it might be a fifty-fifty split with the city. And, and he'd just have to give a copy of the, the invoice to them.
And that, oh.
When you say to them, is that to the chief of police or?
Yeah.
City hall?
No, no, don't, you gotta go to the chief, because, uh, he has to sign off on that.
And, and all those percentages, the splits, that's all in the joint agreement, correct?
Yes.
So if he had a copy of that, he would know, he'd be able to reference that to figure out the splits.
Yeah, you know, and, and we've kind of, uh, kind of fell into a, uh, more of an agreement where it isn't, uh, as strict as that. For example, uh, the roof isn't mentioned in the joint powers agreement. And when we replaced the roof, uh, several years ago, uh, our Mabru's chief at that time, we agreed we'd follow the two-thirds, one-third. Uh, anything in the basements are fifty-fifty, but yet if air handler unit number one has a problem, we pay for it. If two has a problem, they do, because it's their unit. Uh, over time, the, the police chief and I have kind of worked out, well, I'll fix the bathrooms on this side, you fix the bathrooms on that side. So there's just some things we do, rather than split twenty dollar, a, a bill for twenty dollars three ways. And then I pay two-thirds of it, um, sometimes we just kind of do that. Now, you could go back to the joint powers agreement, because you're gonna have a new chief to work with anyway.
But those sound like things that need to be written down somewhere that, in case something happens, people know.
Yeah, well, you can always just go back to the joint powers agreement is written too. But yeah, I, I'll be here for a little while longer, and I'll certainly help Scott work with the police department on, on those splits.
Sounds like you asked Andy.
It, it won't take two or three times, because most of these are repetitive, and, uh, they'll have a routine.
But it needs to get to the point where it's, ask the facilities manager, because that is your job.
Of how this is all done over time.
Right. Or we, or we rewrite the joint agreement that just spells those things out, you know? You've got air handler one, we've got, or we've got one, and they've got two, and. I mean, it sound, might sound miniscule, but it solves a lot of arguments later.
Yeah, you know, because we do, we do have a bill coming for that roof over there. I think they repaired five or eight places up there, two or three weeks ago, so there's gonna be a bill coming for that. So. I'll be in touch, Andy, you know me too well, it takes three or four visits with me to get it into my head, so.
That's fine, uh, yeah, we, we've done pretty well, in thirty years, we've never had, uh, a disagreement about a bill. We've always worked through them.
Great, all right. Be in touch.
Anything else for Scott? Or anything else for us, Scott?
Don't think so.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yeah, well, Wes wanna, this, uh, whip bathroom up, or they're gonna start that on the thirteenth, fourteenth of August?
Okay.
That's on the weekend, so, that's moving forward.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you for that.
So we have executive session for contractual matters, if nobody has anything else. Correct?
Probably legal matters too.
We can't do that, we don't have an attorney. We don't have an attorney, so we can't do legal.
Okay.
Go into executive session for contractual matters.
Second.
Shut the door. Yeah, I have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye. Pose same sign, we're in executive session. Take the motion again.
Okay, so I moved to come out of executive session.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, we're in regular session. The only thing I've got to add is they've started on the Myron Grove project, I mean, preliminary, they were out looking. The only thing I've got to add is they've started on the Myron Grove project, I mean, preliminary, they were out looking at. They went out and served, or not surveyed, looked at the site, talked to the township, so right now it's moving forward.
Yeah, those are folks from National Park Service, you mean, or from?
They, the State Park, or is it State Park? Dugan was here that day, I can't remember, he's State, he's National Park Service. But the people, the actual project managers were here from Denver.
Okay.
So they got, the ball is rolling.
Okay.
It sounds like if everything goes as planned and money would come through, it would be, the project would start next year.
Good deal.
So that's where we're at with that. Nothing else.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes. Thank you.